Six o'clock, I will call the Board of Select a meeting to order for Monday, August 26th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded. It is not being broadcast due to technical difficulties. Our first appointment is at 6:15, so I'm going to ask Town Administrator Zubricki to go forward with the Town Administrator Report, please.
At the last meeting, the Board asked to get, start getting some figures put together on different possibilities for repayment of the secondary treatment cost that Essex is going to be partially responsible for. So far, the City of Gloucester, and this is a preliminary number, subject to change, said that they expect that the total debt service for that project is going to be about $9 million each year that they have to repay. If you take 3.125% of that, that means Essex owes slightly under $300,000, about $281 a year, and this is based on 20 years. If you do some math on the current, using the current Essex sewer rate-
And I'm sorry, let me just interrupt. 20 years, correct?
20 years is what they're looking at right now. You can borrow longer, but they're concerned about higher interest costs kicking in if they do that. So if you then look at how we, how the town did this when the sewer was first put in place, and you use 72% being user-funded and 28% being tax-funded, that breaks down to, if you, if you do the full amount, the $281,000 roughly, it breaks down to another $3.66 on the rate, which for the average person in a single-family home, that's about $220 a year, and the tax-funded piece would be another 6 cents on the rate, about $51 a year, or $52 a year for the average-valued, single-family home in Essex, which is about $830,000. If you did that same thing, but you took $2 million off of what we owe, which would be $100,000 a year, using the sewer interest surplus fund, the $219 goes down to about $154 additional for the sewer rate payer, and it goes from about $52 to about $33 for the taxpayer. The other way the Board wanted me to look at it was, what if the town paid for the entire project spread out over the entire tax rate? That would be around $185, $185 per taxpayer per year, based on the average, single-family home value. And if $2 million was added in from the sewer interest surplus fund, it's about $119. Now, I also, the Board asked me to confirm whether we could use a betterment as another, as another possible funding source. And Town Council did some research and determined that even though there's no physical improvement being made in front of someone's house or at someone's house, because all the improvement is being made at the City of Gloucester wastewater treatment plant, that in fact, a betterment can be used, even though people already paid a betterment once when the sewer went in. If you look at the math on that, and you use the total number of betterments that were charged when we put the sewer in the ground, which was 1,037 and a half betterments, it brings the one-year total to that average, well, to each betterment payer of $273. That's slightly higher than the $219, which we talked about, if you're going to use the rate, 219 additional per year in rate, in paying, if you put it on the rate. But I can say that that $273 will decline over time, because the interest portion of that payment will decline as the principal declines. So, you know, you really do have three options. You have the, the betterment tax option, you have the sewer rate tax option, or the 100% tax option. That gives you a good ballpark. You know, we would have to study this further to make, verify these numbers, and if anything changes with what the city is expecting, then our numbers are going to change too. I just wanted to see, based on the, these overall numbers and these preliminary calculations, whether the Board had a preference that you wanted us to go into in more detail.
How far out until we have to make a final decision? I think that it's prudent to meet with the Board of Commissioners and make sure that we're all on the same page-
Before we spend any more time.
Before we spend more time on this, I also think that we need to identify what is actually left in the sewer betterment account, because I know that I've been talking about upwards of $2 million, but at one point, we were at $3.3 million, so that may be another huge offset. I think we should confirm the number. So I think, not to say we shouldn't waste more time, I appreciate how much work went into this, and I think it's a great starting point.
We have plenty of time to answer your question.
So let's-
It's not until fiscal '27 that we're going to begin repayment. So you have the rest of this fiscal year, then all other fiscal year, then we would have to start repaying. So there's plenty of time. We're trying to get out ahead of it early, so that you can come to some good policy on it. And I can try to get the Board of Public Works in at the next meeting, if that, if they're available.
I think that that would be helpful, because when I start to think about it, as far as, you know, grinding stations that need to be done. My house doesn't need a grinding, but I have, my money is being helped to pay for that.
Yep.
So it's all these things that this one group of people is really helping support all of it, and is that, you know, is that fair?
Right, and we need to make sure that we're not depleting the betterment fund that is for sewer upgrades, capital expenses, and if they have a pump go, that's $100,000. So you're not looking to bring this down to zero. We do need to make sure we have money in reserves to take care of sewer-related issues, but I do think that it's, you know, the people that paid a betterment, this is their money. They should get it back to help offset the cost of this. So I do, you know, we, we need more discussion at the table, and I think that having two separate Boards meeting and not sitting together and doing this is not easy, so-
And it's just a matter of also making sure that the public is aware of the meeting, so that they can join. It, it, I get it, it's not that, it's not a big chunk, but for somebody who's on a fixed income? It is, it is a big chunk.
Absolutely. Okay, so if we can invite them in, that would be great.
The next item is consideration of candidates for Chief of Police. We need to look at a couple of things here. Need to determine how you're going to reach out to candidates and post the job, and you need to determine what your schedule's going to be. In addition, the Board should determine whether the job description, which, which you have made some minor changes to, is that the final version? Because when we actually do advertise the position, most candidates are going to ask for a copy of the job description, and we don't want to change it in the middle of the advertisement period. So let's, let's start with that. Does the Board have other comments or questions on the existing job description?
This is the one that says, "Ideal guidance, possible?"
No.
This one?
At a previous meeting, we had given you, it's not in your package today, a copy of the position description with some markup on it.
Here, I have an extra copy.
Thanks, I thought I had put it together. And this was based off of the prior?
Yes.
With some tweaking?
Existing chief, with some tweaking, yeah.
Okay.
And it can be changed again, and, you know, if we set a goal to have final comments for your next meeting, if, if you have any, then that's going to come right into line.
I think we do need to update it a little bit, because I think what the document Al was talking about, the ideas for guidance possibly to be used with respect to the chief hiring, I think that some of these are, should be incorporated into the job description. I think that's part of the basis of why we created these, was to make them part of the job. So I think we should at least do a final pass with the job description and the ideas and incorporate them together.
Okay.
So I think we'll take that up at the next meeting.
And then with respect to advertisement, we have the Mass Chiefs Association, which will advertise this for $50 fee. Mass Cop, which is the, kind of the line-level police union source, has a posting page, which they haven't given me a cost, but I don't think there will even be a cost. Then there's the Massachusetts Police Association, that will post the advertisement for free. Those would be three good sources within Massachusetts, as well as, of course, sending a copy of this to all of our current employees. I don't know if you want to broaden it beyond that or not, but there's, there's ways to do that, if you would like to.
So the Mass Chiefs Association, is that what it is?
Yes.
That's to all current police chiefs that are out there?
Yep.
And then, what's the second one?
This is for people that aren't police chiefs, but they're part of a police union, and there's a posting-
Is that the MPA or?
It's called Mass Cop. MPA is, is the Massachusetts Police Association, which is kind of a mix of both, and that could, they'll post it as well.
So Mass Cop is to anybody who is in the police?
Mass Cop.
Mass Cop.
Yeah, that's mostly people that are represented by a union, and the Mass Chiefs is chiefs, and they're certainly not in a union, and Mass Police Association is, I believe, just an association that anyone can belong to.
So I guess the first question is, do you really see a need to go outside of Massachusetts? I don't. I mean, I think that we've, we've already just, we're going outside of the department, and we're looking for a broader reach. I think staying within Massachusetts makes sense, and let's face it, if there's somebody interested in New Hampshire or Rhode Island, they'll probably hear about it. You're gonna-
Correct. That's where I'm going, is that, do we, would we need to do all three?
So you're talking about even narrowing that down to just maybe go with Mass Cop, because it's not specific to chiefs, it's, it's still getting everybody that's part of a union?
So Mass Cop is union?
Mass Cop, yeah.
So that would be anybody who's a union, which wouldn't be any of the chiefs in Massachusetts?
But it could be someone who's aspiring to be a chief.
Correct. Oh, no, no, no. It would have a pool of people, definitely.
Yeah.
And I would be fine with that?
And if you did Mass Police Association, it's free, you might as well do it, I mean-
Yeah, those two.
Well, there'd be three, Mass Chiefs, Mass Cop, and-
Al was saying she doesn't know that she feels that there's a need to send it to Mass Chiefs. She's saying, what if you narrowed it to two?
Or do we get penalized because we don't advertise, you know, use everybody?
Well, if you, if you don't send it to Mass Chiefs, you're not going to get people who are, who are already chiefs. You're just not going to have a very good distribution to them. You can choose not to, there's no rule.
It doesn't matter, I mean, I was just trying to, I don't want 50 people applying, but I also don't want one person applying, type of thing.
So at least we've narrowed it to keeping it in Massachusetts, because if we go national, we're going to end up with hundreds of applications. That would be a disaster, so keeping it in Massachusetts, and we, is there any way to find out the circulation of each of these organizations? Probably not.
Well, Mass Cop's just thousands of people. Mass Chiefs is, you know, 300-something people.
Sure.
Mass, MPA, I don't know, a mix.
So even though MPA is free?
Yeah.
Maybe we don't do it, because it's-
It's fine, there's nothing says you have to, I'm just trying to give you some resources.
What do you think, to keep it to two? Do Ma, do Mass Chiefs and Mass Cop?
It's fine, let's, let's get this thing worked out, so that they know what the job description is that they're looking for. I don't, at that point, I mean, like you said, it's free.
Okay, so we're going to stay in Massachusetts, and we're going to advertise with those three.
Three of them, okay.
But as far as any sort of posting, which is one of your next questions, is what is the timeline? My question goes to Fall Town Meeting and 97 versus 97A, because-
That's going to make a difference.
Because that's going to make a difference in what we're posting. So really, we should take this up for posting the day after Fall Town Meeting, or somewhere thereabouts?
And that's if the Board determines that you're going to have that as an article, but right now, you've discussed it as a possibility.
Right.
So we'll take up the schedule in late November.
Perfect.
But you're still going to have six whole months between Jan. 1st and June 30th.
So that was what my question, my mind I've been thinking about, is like, at what point, so we advertise it, if it's anything like some of the other, like a principal or something that you're, you can't say anything until the interview process is down to like the two, is it the same with the police?
Well, the Preliminary Screening Committee will make a recommendation for candidates that would come forward in a public interview.
Okay.
And the Select-
So they do do a public, there is a public interview?
Final interview is public.
Okay.
Preliminary Screening Committee weeds out people that aren't qualified, people that aren't a good fit, et cetera. So that's how that works, and, you know, the Board had asked whether the two Board members that are not on the, the Preliminary Screening Committee can provide more input on what types of questions they want the Preliminary Screening Committee to ask of all candidates, and certainly that is possible, and given the fact that you're not even going to set a schedule until sometime in November, we should use the time in the meantime for Board members to come to this public meeting, each, each meeting, if there are new ideas, so that the Preliminary Screening Committee, you know, knows what, what they would like to have asked about.
Perfect. Okay, we're going to pause. We have an appointment at 6:30, or, I'm sorry, at 6:15, my apologies. Scott Trenty from Senior Care to discuss upcoming programs and initiatives. Scott, I'm going to have you join us at the podium. When you speak into the microphone, you have to speak about six or eight inches away and just project your voice, so that it can be captured for the recording. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I want to give a thanks to Pam and Brendan for arranging this. Earlier this year, I had met with Brendan, and we talked about some of the new programs and services at Senior Care, some of which I want to highlight tonight. Thank you to the Board of Select for having me today. I have Sue Goode, who is here today, she is on our Board of Directors. She was the successor to Laurel Eisenhower, who moved from Essex, but remains on our Board as an advisor, and certainly still advocates for the town of Essex. I want to also give a shout-out to your Council on Aging, who we work very closely with, as well as your first responders, who are very helpful to us in our Adult Protective Services Program, in terms of making reports and assisting us in our work. So again, I want to highlight some of the new programs and services that we have. If I was to tell you about everything that we have at Senior Care, I would be here for two hours, and nobody wants that, right? So one of the things that's new, both of which are grant-funded, is that we have both a technology navigator, as well as a technology coordinator. We're able to put on classes for older adults, and in some cases, caregivers, adults with disabilities, say, at the Council on Aging, or some of your housing sites, and we can help people to learn how to email, how to share photos, surf the net, be safe on the Internet, et cetera. We also have a grant whereby we utilize virtual reality headsets. So we run groups where, groups of four people will have a headset on, see the same thing. We have a coordinator who has a control panel, and say the group has an interest in some museum in Europe, or they want to see their, the home that they grew up in, or a place that they've been in the past. We have the technology to be able to see that, everyone sees the same thing, and we've really targeted folks who are kind of socially isolated, lonely, get groups together, so that they can develop friendships, communicate, talk about what they're seeing together, et cetera. We've also partnered with a company called Tech Goes Home, out of Boston, and we offer 10-week courses in kind of Computers 101, and everyone that participates in these classes gets a free pad, as well as, in some cases, a free year of Internet services. So again, that's something that's available to groups that are interested in Essex. We, our tech navigator and our coordinator will go to homes to help people, one-on-one, if they're having issues with their cellphones, or with their computers, hooking up their printer, whatever it might be. So just know about that. And lastly, technology-wise, is that we've partnered with a company called Care Coach, and what this is, it utilizes, everyone that participates in Care Coach gets a tablet, and the tablet will, is a video recorder, so it will, it utilizes a fishnet camera that can see the home, the elder is in complete control of it, turning it on, turning it off. There's a 24/7 health coach behind the tablet, and we program it to meet a person's needs, so it can do medication reminders, or if someone needs to take their daily weight, it'll do that, or reminders about doctor's appointment, or whatever it might be. The other feature that it has is that caregivers can remote-in and videoconference with their loved one. This is particularly helpful for long-distance caregivers, so daughter, son, grandchild that lives in California can actually video-chat with their loved one, with this, with this unit. We have a grant, we are real, we have really upped our services to caregivers. We saw a tremendous spike during the pandemic, in, in terms of the needs of caregivers. So we have a caregiver support specialist at Senior Care that will work one-on-one with folks, oftentimes helping a caregiver who has a loved one with dementia, and will educate them about dementia, help them out with managing maybe difficult behaviors at times, things of that nature. She also offers a support groups, one of which is on Zoom, and available to Essex caregivers if they wish to, to participate. We have a grant called Assisting Caregivers to Thrive. This is a grant that we received from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services here in Massachusetts, and it, it is, it runs out in March, so I'm really putting a plug in for this everywhere I go. We have scholarships that are available through this grant, so we have provided caregivers, like, with a day or two out of the house, where we'll arrange care in the home. Pedicures, manicures, lunch trips, with or without their caregivers. You can, if you go to our website, you can access the scholarship application. On one occasion, we had a caregiver who was taking care of their loved one, whose washing machine died, so we bought him a washing machine. So sky's the limit in terms of what we can do through scholarships, so I like to spread the word on, on that. Also through this grant, we've developed a number of partnerships with various entities, so we will do luncheons, we've done luncheons at Depot Diner, Village Pancake House, Bowport, and again, this is for caregivers and their loved one. We have a relationship with the Cabot Theater. Last week, we, we had To Catch a Thief, we had over 250 people come to that, Fiddler on the Roof, Singin' in the Rain, and we have more upcoming. North Shore Music Theater provides us with free tickets for caregivers and their care recipients, so that's another option. Gloucester Stage Company, same thing. Cape Am Museum, we have a partnership with, and they'll offer free tickets there, which is followed up by a lunch. The Zen Center in Hamilton, so we've had sessions there for caregivers. And we also have an evidence-based program that's available to Essex residents, it's called Savvy Caregiver. It's an eight-week program that follows a strict curriculum and provides education and things of that nature for, for caregivers. I always want to put a plug in, and Brendan called me out on this, because I gave him a bunch of brochures about Senior Care, and I gave you folks a packet with brochures. We have a state home care program, which is called the Consumer-Directed Program. So prior to the pandemic, there was a workforce shortage. It's been seriously exacerbated by the pandemic, such that it's very difficult for our provider agencies to have homemakers, or personal care workers, or home health aides. And the Consumer-Directed Program, which is a state home care program, an elder or surrogate can become an employer, okay? Once they become an employer, fill out all the necessary paperwork, it goes to a fiscal intermediary that we use, that's used statewide. They do payroll, they do workers' comp, they set up unemployment, end-of-year taxes, all that kind of stuff. But the elder can hire whoever they want, including family members, with the exception of a spouse, okay? That person would be paid, I believe it's somewhere around $20 an hour. The elder is responsible for training the person, scheduling, hiring, firing, so they kind of run the show. So in lieu of the workforce shortage, this is a really good option for people. And what we find oftentimes is that a neighbor, or a friend, or a family member's already doing this, so why not get paid for it, right? So that's, that's definitely an option. We have a program, it's unfunded, but we highly value it, it's called State Pet Services. So in this program, we will do things like dog walking, we will go into people's homes, feed the cat, change the litter, feed the dog, take the dog for a walk, feed the bird, the fish, whatever it might be. We find that oftentimes elders who become very dedicated to their, to their pets, sometimes they'll need a procedure, and will need to go into the hospital, but they won't go, because they don't want to leave their dog home alone, and they don't have anyone to care for it. So we can fill that void. So I did want to make the residents avail, know about that program as well. I provided the Board Select with a data sheet that kind of summarizes the, some of the services that we offer in Essex, so I'll just highlight some, I can't go through the whole thing, just for the sake of time. But as far as, everyone always associates Senior Care with Meals on Wheels, right? So we deliver about 397 Meals on Wheels in the month of July, as well as 75 grab-and-go meals that are done out of the Council on Aging. Nutrition volunteers from Essex, we have eight of them, and we also have a nutritionist who can go into homes for consultations regarding folks' diets, et cetera. In our state home care program, we have 31 residents who are enrolled in a state elder home care program. So to know that, that means they're going to have a care manager, they're likely going to have a nurse, they're going to have intermittent visits throughout the year, and if someone has a medical event or a change in status, we tweak their care plan to increase the, the services that we offer. Adult Protective Services, we currently have two open investigations and two ongoing cases as well. Senior Care is one of two ASAPS in Massachusetts that has a federal program called AmeriCorp Seniors. We have over 350 volunteers in this program, Sue being one of them. Here in Essex, we have 18 people who have volunteered in FY '24, to the tune of 991 hours for the fiscal year. I always like to make sure people know that we have a volunteer medical transportation program, so if you call a couple days in advance, people can get round-trip rides to their medical appointments. And we have a couple volunteers that will also go into Boston as well. Options Counseling, this is a service that we can offer to adults with a disability, age 22 and over, and it's a short-term intervention whereby an options counselor will sit with a person, could be the person seeking services, it could be a caregiver, and will kind of tell them, lay out what their options are, provide them with information on each of the options, so that they can make an informed decision in terms of where to go. Things are so complicated in healthcare and with services, this is a really good service. Just some other things. August 7th, with the assistance from the Essex Council on Aging, we provided homebound elders with a total of 60 older adults in Essex, with bulk, bulk produce boxes, we're doing it again, August 28th. And caregiver support, as I said, people can participate by Zoom, if you have a group here in Essex, one could be done in person as well. We have a relationship with the Green Belt, so we do walks for, through that act grant. We have one coming up on September 10th, and that is also followed by a lunch. I mentioned the evidence-based program. We also, I talked to Brendan about this, we have a program called Dementia Friends. There is an organization called Dementia Friends America. It's a one-hour presentation where folks kind of learn signs and symptoms of dementia, strategies for working and interacting with folks who have dementia. We've provided this to, throughout our nine community catchment area, to town employees, city employees, we did all the city, consumer-facing employees in Gloucester, that was a big group. We've also done it with first responders, so this is also available. In terms of- In terms of the number of home care services that we have provided in Essex, for the FY '24, we provided $155,288 worth of services. Now, this doesn't include all of the services, this is just through our home care program. I did want to mention that on September 12th is our 52nd anniversary. We're having it at the Shaolin Lou in Rockport. It's 7:30 to 9:30 PM. You're all invited, and we, it is kind of a cocktail party. We have a two-person jazz band, we will have high-ended hors d'oeuvres, and we'll give out a couple of community awards, and we also have a silent auction. So, if you're interested in that, just go to our website, which is seniorcareinc.org. And the last thing I'll say is, just call us. That's all I can say is, if you have a question regarding services for, for yourself, for a loved one, a friend, whoever, just call us and we'll help you to figure it out, okay? That's the best thing I can say to close out. So, again, I'd like to thank you all for having me tonight, and if you have any questions, you're always welcome to call me at Senior Care.
I have one question before you depart.
Yes.
Shine counseling, does senior care offer shine counseling?
We do offer shine counseling, so we have a shine volunteer. You simply have to call Senior Care to schedule an appointment, and he will meet one-on-one. His busy time, as you might imagine, is, is around the end of the year.
Of course.
You know, and it's open enrollment for the Medicare plans, et cetera. But yeah, we have shine, and we have a number of community partners that also offer shine counseling as well.
We offer shine counseling here in Essex as well, but we're finding that it's become just so cumbersome, and it's a daunting task, and with part-time help, it's become difficult to manage the amount of people that need it. So, maybe for people that are not Essex residents, we're finding that we're bringing in a lot of people from other communities looking for shine counseling help. So, maybe we could redirect them to Senior Care and take care of some of the Essex residents first. So, it might be a great resource for other communities as well. And I, I hope you're making the presentation to many other select boards, but that was a great presentation. Thank you so much. Do you have questions, Alva?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you, Sue, for joining us. We appreciate your time as well. I'm going to pause the Town Administrator's Report so I can let a couple of our residents go. I see, I see that we have Jane on the line with us, so I'm going to turn our attention to a couple of one-day license requests. I will entertain a motion to approve a one-day wine and malt license for the Essex County Green Belt Association, Jane Rumril Cox Reservation, 82 Eastern Avenue, for use on Saturday, September 21st, 2024, between the hours of 11:30 AM and 2:30 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I forgot, we only have two, so I'm going to make these motions, I apologize. I'm going to make two motions. The first one is for Essex County Green Belt Association, Jane Rumril Cox Reservation Tent, 82 Eastern Ave., for use on Saturday, September 21st, 2024, between the hours of 11:30 AM and 2:30 PM. A two-person band will have public address system, two vocal microphones, electric guitar with a 25-watt stereo amplified, and an electronic keyboard with a 50-watt amplifier, all drum sounds programmed in the computer, and will go through the PA. And the second one is the Essex County Green Belt Association, Jane Rumril, 82 Eastern Avenue, for use on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, between the hours of 2:30 PM and 6:30 PM. One musician performing with a guitar using a microphone in a small amp setup. He would prefer, perform outside of the studio bar, so I'll make both of those motions.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I just want to make a comment to Jane, thanking her for putting the details that makes it easier to approve. Thank you.
Certainly does. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jane, you are all set. You're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, or welcome to start enjoying your night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. Have a great night. I see that we have Mr. Lang with us, so I'm going to find, find that on the agenda, bear with me, Tom. So, I have one appointment. We received a lovely letter from the Chair of the Historic Commission requesting that we appoint Mr. Lang to the Historic Commission for a partial three-year term. So, I will make a motion to approve Tom Lang for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/2027 to the Historical Commission.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome to join us for the evening, or you're welcome to enjoy your, the rest of your night. Tom, Tom, you'll need to come down to the town clerk and get sworn in, so she'll have your appointment card signed. Just come in Monday through Friday from like anywhere between 8 and 3 in the afternoon.
Through Thursday.
I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday from say 8 to 3, and Vicki will swear you in, okay? Thank you. You as well. Okay, is there anybody else with us that we can let go? I don't see anybody else. Okay, so we'll go back to the Administrator's Report.
With respect to the Essex dredging project, the bid opening was on August 20th. This is the Army Corps of Engineers that are, that conducted the bid opening, they're conducting the project. The government, independent government estimate, which is what they do every, every time they put together a project, was just over $3.7 million. Two bids that I know the bid price is on were submitted on the 20th, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. The apparent low bidder from the 20th was just over $2.7 million, and there was another bid for about $4.4 million. But a few days later, we were told by the Army Corps that there was a third bid received through an alternative bid pathway, I guess. And it was actually even lower than the $2.7 million bid. But they had to check that bid out and vet it to make sure that it was covering everything. I did check in with them today, and they still were not able to give me information on what the amount of that bid was or what the company was. It seems that even if that third bid is, is ruled not valid, at $2.7 million, a project will go forward. The issue will become if they have to go with that bidder. The, that particular bidder has indicated to some of the marinas that reached out to them that they're only coming in with one dredging barge, one scowl. And if that's the case, and they're not taking small scows to one larger scowl that's, that's in the harbor or out towards the mouth, and that one barge is going to go back and forth to the disposal site every time, it doesn't even seem like they're going to get the federal dredging done, let alone have time to do the private dredging. Now, we haven't heard that from the Corps. This is, we've heard this from people who had reached out to this particular company, and we don't know if this particular company is even going to be the accepted bidder. Because if the one that was lower than them, for some reason, is, is a viable bid, they could be using a completely different method and everything could be okay. But if you're going to spend even less on it, it would seem a difficult situation. So, that's all I have on it right now. I'm going to give you an update at the next meeting, but I still don't know how this is going to settle. I don't know if you have any questions.
And so, the next steps is really that the Army Corps of Engineers and their parties will do all of the vetting for us and then say, here's the lowest bidder?
Correct.
And then we have to go with that and say the start date is blah, blah, blah?
Correct, and if the Army Corps is convinced that the federal work will get done within the time period, they've allotted...
That's what their concern is.
That's what their concern is. If the private marinas try to get that company to put on more resources and take care of the private work at the same time in a successful grade, but if they're not, the Army Corps is not concerned about it, so. The next item has to do with a preliminary discussion that Chairman Perrine and I had with Chairman Harrison, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Manchester, and Town Administrator Fetterspiel, along with the Superintendent and her finance expert, and Chris Reed, Chair of the School Committee, just to start talking about what the budget looks like, what are the factors that need to be considered. And we did ask about the ability of the school district to use reserves again, to put toward the school budget in order to keep the apportionment increase to Essex down as much as possible. They said that they would look into that as a possibility. We all agreed that it's important to look also at the capital project that's before us, which is going to be the Essex Elementary School, and making sure that there isn't a need for too much additional operational funding from the town side prior to a decision being made on the capital project, so that voters understand that the town and the two towns in the school have done their best to keep operational costs down, knowing that there's going to be a need for funding on an annual basis for the capital project.
Questions, one thing that you said about using the reserves, so it's not just going to lower Essex apportionment?
It would lower across the board.
Across the board. I just want to make sure it's not just Essex.
Correct. At this point in time, though, the, the apportionment to Manchester probably would come in closer to the 2.5%. And so, in other words, it's actually affordable within Proposition 2.5, whereas we know that the Essex would come in higher.
And we don't know the numbers yet until October 1st, correct?
We don't know the student enrollment numbers until October 1st. So, you know, this was a very preliminary conversation, but the discussion centered around, you know, trying everything possible to keep the increase in the budget down. And we talked about the fact that the school district does have some fixed costs, including contractual obligations and healthcare, and you know, where's that going to come in? So, this was just getting the conversation started, and I'm sure we'll be having more interactions, and I can keep the board updated on that. The next thing is a task force that has been studying the possibility of bringing municipal drinking water to communities in the area, particularly communities in the Ipswich River Basin, which we're not in that basin. But in order to reduce the reliance on groundwater or river water from the Ipswich River, groundwater in the vicinity of the river or water from the river itself, because the Ipswich River is in need of environmental improvement and hydrological improvement. And so, this group has been studying this for a while, and they asked the town of Essex whether the town wanted to potentially get in on a study of an additional source of municipal water supply. Again, we're not detracting from the Ipswich River Basin, but if things like this might be thought about in the future, it's possible that Essex wouldn't have to run a water filtration plant or public water supply wells. That's at a very high level. Selectman Fippen, who understands the hydrology of the area very well, is going to meet with, with me and with the Chairman of the Board of Public Works this week, and I think we'll be able to give you an update on whether we think there's any advantage at all to the town. And so, that's kind of what that's all about.
So, and this is a task force to, to try and see whether or not there's an alternative way other than using river?
River water or groundwater within the vicinity of the river.
Or is it just for Ipswich River? Or is it our water, does it indirectly come from the Ipswich River?
No, no. Comes from Chabaco Lake, which is fed by things that come from Manchester, and it goes out through the Essex River system.
Have you ever gone through one of these before? Like, I'm wondering, so are they talking, having a reservoir created that multiple towns?
Well, they're talking about in, in the possibility of sub-towns that draw directly from the river moving over to the MWRA, which of course comes from the Quabin Reservoir, which is way out in the middle of the state, okay?
That's right.
They're talking about towns that don't directly draw from the Ipswich River to potentially be, be fed through reservoirs, but in a, conserving the water in a different way, particularly during the winter. So, Selectman Fippen understands a lot more about it, and he's not here tonight, so he would have said a few words, but I think we'll bring it back after we meet with the Chairman of the Board of Public Works to tell you whether Essex really has a stake in this.
And if you happen to come across a website, that's a public website, would be great.
I was just going to tell you the website to go do your research, which I was on for quite a few hours this weekend, is the MWRA website. There's quite a bit of information there, as well as a map that shows you about the Quabin Reservoir and the areas of Massachusetts that it serves.
What's kind of to me, the MWRA is very similar to me as, oh, let's get on Seward, because we have to, and, oh, yes, your bills will go up 100%.
But I don't think they're talking about feeding Essex by MWRA. They're talking about taking the big water users that draw directly, like I think they said Topsfield, Middleton, putting them on MWRA. The smaller communities would be potentially fed, I think, from Hamilton, and they would be working on a different system using reservoirs upstream, and...
The original conversation was to possibly place us over by the Beverly Airport off Route 97 and create almost like our own reservoir area, because there's such a huge swath of land. And they talked about installing it over there and feeding multiple towns. And where the benefit would be for us is you would eliminate needing basically a water plant. You would have to distribute it, but you wouldn't be making water. So, you'd be looking at, I mean...
And how do you know that water's fresh?
Well, they would have to, they would have to tell us all about that. Again, it may not even have legs at all. We were just asked to consider it, because there's probably going to be some towns that enter into this. We're, we seem like we're in a different situation, and the initial impression of the Chairman of the Board of Public Works is that there really isn't a lot of incentive to do this, but it's something that should be talked about nonetheless.
Well, and the hard part is, is we're in the process of upgrading a lot of our stuff, so...
And that's one of the points that he raised, exactly.
I'd hate to upgrade all this and then say, oh, let's join on this, so anyways.
So, we'll see what they have to say. Okay, town meeting topics. From the last time, you'll see in bold some things that I updated or changed. We're talking about a potential new fire tanker truck. If there's not going to be a grant available with respect to a new police cruiser, we are talking about the pickup truck. And the pickup truck could potentially go to the Shellfish Department. It's going to need a little work, but probably within the realm of reasonability. There isn't a truck that can come from DPW, because they're already going to be giving one old truck to the fire department, and the other one is going from water, I think, to the highway, or Seward, to the highway department. Let's see, with respect to the Council on Aging van, I didn't bold it, but there's been additional discussion, because the two staff from the Council on Aging came to see me, because they're interested in really pursuing the van option. They're not really finding that they're getting enough flexible service from CADA. Bowport, which they were using, is very expensive. They have an understanding that Manchester may actually want to sell the town, one of its two, one of its used vans, they have four vans. There's also a possibility that Manchester has van capacity with drivers that they could offer to the town. But the preference that I'm hearing right now is that we get our own van, and if we could get it from Manchester, it would be a lot cheaper. But even that needs to be run back up through the Council on Aging, so they can tell us whether they would like to have van service from Manchester versus buying a van from Manchester. So, I'll bring that back when I get more information.
Yeah, and I would also say, well, because I don't know how often the van was being used when we did have one, and you know...
It was being used a fair amount. Our problem was getting qualified drivers. There were a lot of fender benders and backing up into poles and stuff like that, and it, it ended up being more of a maintenance of the vehicle than it, than it was worth. We then had the vehicle go through a time where there was a really deep engine problem, and it couldn't be fixed. And so, we scrapped the vehicle. Fortunately, we did get that vehicle via a grant, we didn't pay for it. I talked about the constable truck. We asked, the board asked about getting additional accounting system licenses to let department heads go in and monitor the budget. I looked into that, I provided the board with some information. I don't think it's financially sustainable.
No.
No.
I think it's fine just to get reports from the town accountant.
I wrote on that to either throw to third tier or long range, if you want to keep tracking it, but I don't think it's, I would, I would stick it at long range myself, just as a...
Long range, yeah. Then, the prudent investor rule. This is just a way to take the town's money that can be invested if the town meeting was going to adopt it, and it provides the treasurer with additional types of investments that are more risky than what we're allowed to do right now.
But Brooke did, in the email, she confirmed she's not looking to do this.
Not interested in doing it right now. She says other towns need to try it out first, and her step would be to take the investment vehicles that we are allowed to use without adopting this and move to a different financial advisor.
Yes.
This, I think, I could put to long range as well.
I would put that to long range.
Then, funding to cover mid-year increases in electricity. We know we've signed now a contract that's significantly higher than the expiring rate, and I would say that other mid-year increases that we need to deal with are going to be to balance the budget in the town clerk's office and also in the Shellfish office, because we've had some vacancies or leaves of absence that need to be dealt with. Then I put in bold, you asked about what the requirement is as of January 1st to pay anyone who's considered salary, and it's about $58,000, almost $59,000. We have one salaried employee that makes about $50,000 right now. I would suggest that you would look at simply making sure, you convert that person to an hourly worker, and you make sure they only work 40 hours a week, and then that's it. You don't have to come up by almost $9,000. You either make them hourly or you, anyone who's salaried has to come up.
So, and then also, my feeling would be monitoring what overtime they are required to do.
And we will have to do that. And in fact, this actually started when they, a few years back, this, this threshold was changed, but then it was challenged in court. But in the time period where we had to deal with it, because we weren't going to give the increase to the salaried employee, we simply did that. We had a tracking system where the person had to verify that they were only working 40 hours a week. This could be challenged again and rolled back.
This could be problematic, given the particular position, and somewhat, it's weather-dependent. You're going to have weeks when that employee doesn't work 40 hours, and they've been salaried for so long, how do you...
They'll still have to do something. They'll have to work on equipment. They'll have to maybe go for training at the Division of Marine Fisheries. But the alternative is to simply up the salary. And that's a lot, that's like a $9,000 or $10,000 jump, and I don't know that...
Well, and I also, I mean, like, the overtime to me has to be true overtime, not, well, I'm going to have to do a meeting at night, so that's overtime. No, no, no.
That's, this employee, I mean, I realize that it can't be employee-specific, but this employee isn't going to pull any of that. My fear is that, I'm sure this ebbs and flows seasonally. I'm sure in the summer months, he's doing 60 hours a week, and in the winter, he may be doing 25 or 30, but it's going to be prob, it's seasonal, so he's going to have time where he would do...
And that's the part that I'm trying to understand, is what's the, what's going to, how much overtime is it going to be?
Well, I think I know the solution there, because we're trying to bring on additional deputy constables. If it becomes necessary, the, the constable can schedule in deputies for some portion of hours, and they, that's a lot less than increasing the...
Sure.
But I can tell you that he, he likes to work, of course, he has to work a tide every day, sometimes two tides, when it's lighter out, and that's where you end up with additional hours.
Right.
But perhaps we could put some things that he usually does for maintenance or training in the winter season. So we're going to look at everything and probably talk to him about, hey, what do you do?
Lucky you only have one employee.
Yeah, but I also...
At this point, yeah.
I agree, but, I mean, I've, I've been working on a wage and salary scale, just looking over different towns and trying to do a chart that I want to bring to the board, and maybe this is an area where we need to look at comps and see if it makes more sense. I realize that I'm going to give everyone a heart attack when I say maybe it makes more sense to bring them up by $9,000, to keep them salaried. I don't know, but I think we should look at what other Shellfish constables are getting to do this work. He has not had a significant increase in a long time. He's been in the position for a long time, and you're looking at cost of living. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Is, you're talking about bringing somebody that's, he's...
So I think that that's a good point, to look to see what others...
I can look at the other towns.
I think we should, I mean...
There's only so many on the North Shore. I mean, that's who you're going to compare to.
Right, and it's, we only have one employee that this falls to, one particular position. I think we should look at it and just do a comparison before we just brush it off to hourly. I think it's going to become more cumbersome to make this hourly than it might be to bring this up.
And so all of our, because it seemed like, it seemed like, the website I read, I laughed at, it was mainly, a lot of times, administrative assistant type of people that were complaining. So we, our administrators are either already above 58...
Everyone, everyone who's salaried in the town is already above that threshold significantly, just, there's just the one person. I can say that...
And most of those employees, the administrative assistants, they're hourly.
Yeah.
They're not salaried.
Well, that's what I was looking at. I looked at, I pulled out the book last year, and I'm like, okay, it looks like they're, I don't even know that all of them are 40 hours or 36.
If you look, if you look at the book, you'll only find people who are non-contract, non, non-union. The union contracts spell out the compensation for all the other employees. So it's on here, of course, because if you're going to go to increase the salary, it has to be done in November, so that it can start on this new deadline.
Yep.
Now, it's also possible that, once again, this will be challenged in court, and there will be no requirement.
Okay.
Okay?
And I think it really, if you can look at prior years, I don't know how, how you do it, but if they already, like, so in the summertime, if they were doing 12 hours extra a week, what does that work out at overtime versus increasing their salary?
Yeah, we, we'll do the whole analysis.
Because I think that they may, may say, no, I'm fine, just, but anyways.
We'll look at all options there. Then the, the Department of Public Works has indicated that they may want to create stabilization funds for both water and sewer. Now, the town has its own general stabilization fund, there's about $1 million in there, and then we have, I think, a dozen or so special purpose stabilization funds. The water and sewer enterprise operations do not have stabilization funds per se. They just get what's called retained earnings number at the end of the year, which is their free cash. Okay? But I think what they're trying to do is create stabilization funds, and then actually, in the rate, you can calculate in planned funding to go into those funds on a regular basis. So they're not always just reliant on whatever comes out in retained earnings. That's the concept. I guess the question is, I mean, this is the first time you're hearing it, is this something that the board wants to explore with them? And maybe we talk about it with them when they come in.
I would love to talk about it and hear the reasoning, but I would also like to hear from our financial professionals and see where the finance committee lands on a stabilization account for enterprise funds.
It just seems like it's one more add-on to the sewer bill.
Yeah. I mean, especially now, while we're talking about already increasing, you know, taxes to our rate, our sewer users.
Okay, so then I had highlighted, and you have, may have more after I get done with this, unpaid bills. We have a few bills that I've listed there, and then we've, we had in the past an employee that was not having the correct withholding for Social Security, and we have the finance team looking at that right now, so I can get you more information on it.
So in that first tier, the only question I had was regarding 97 versus 97A.
Yes.
Have you gone looking to see what other towns have put on their article when they adopted it? Because there's a part of me that feels that we need to, the first thing you hear is weak and strong, and really, that's concerning to me.
I don't think that language has to be in the article. That is a...
No, but that's what I'm saying, is the first, when somebody says, I don't understand what this is, they ask somebody, possibly in the industry, who's going to say, oh, a weak chief versus a strong chief. I'd like something marketed that actually says, you know, what it, so that somebody can look at it and understand what's the difference if I vote one or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe a verbiage from somebody who's been both a weak chief and a strong chief, and be able to say, here's what I found the differences to be. And it's more for understanding at town, you know, because it's going to have to be voted at town meeting, so...
Well, in the article itself, people don't need to see those words.
No, 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 I'm saying a pamphlet for delivery.
Right, and so we can do, we can do like a handout that doesn't use those words either.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. And I wanted to say one more thing. The, we're getting another $20,000 earmark to study the lake and the air, and the airway brook and the watershed around it. The Chabaco Lake Association has asked if the board, and I think this needs to be brought when Selectman Fippen is back with you the next time, but the Chabaco Lake Association has asked if they wanted, if, if they had an idea to use that money, would the town consider that, but also would the town provide a match to that money so they could do more with it? And again, I think you need Selectman Fippen to comment on that, but...
I'd need to know what the study was going to be studying.
Yep, so I just got a memo tonight. I'm going to send that to the Selectmen between now and the next meeting, so that you can see what they're talking about, and we can go from there. I did put other things into the second tier. The floodplain bylaw, we've now, we now know isn't going to be this fall, so that's been put in, actually, the annual town meeting first tier. And then the successor leases for the town land benefiting Shea's Riverside and for the Legion property, that will be in the annual town meeting as well, because both leases don't expire until June 30 of 2025.
Even, even if the ownership changes, it stays?
Yeah, I think it's assignable.
Okay.
But we'll look at the name, too. And then the second tier, review the fire department staffing situation. I think we're going to have some people in at the next meeting for that. And then I put in third tier, just thinking about whatever is chosen for the method of repayment of the Gloucester Secondary Treatment, it may need, depending on what's chosen, it may need a special vote, but that's, again, down the road. And that's, those are the highlights. Now, what do you have for additional comments?
Did you have any, Alva?
I had a question regarding third tier, because I didn't understand what it was. What is this, considered increasing tree budget for more proactive work, Apple Street, others?
The Board of, the Department of Public Works has said for many years that their tree budget gets sapped just in the first few months of the fiscal year. The issue is that they get called after that tree budget is gone, because there's a tree here or there that's on, you know, in the town right of way, and we're usually going to like the Reserve Fund to get the money. Sometimes they can get National Grid if it's also a conflict with a power line, but it's on third tier, because you could add unlimited amount of money to take trees down.
Right.
Well, I mean, honestly, I would love if there was a grant out there to do, we've got so many culverts that are full of vines that are killing the trees, so the trees are falling and, you know, really, to me, causing a future biohazard, or road damage or whatever. So I don't think that there is, if that was the case, every town would have it.
Yeah, I doubt it, but I'll look at that for you.
We happen to have a lot of trees on roads, so...
All right. What else?
My only comment was also third tier, and it's, I think, will become clearer after we have a meeting this week with Conemaugh Point Association members, but the providing funding to hire Conemaugh Point Association to provide additional lifeguard July through August. I was suggesting moving that to first tier, but I think we'll know more about how that's going to shake out when we meet with them this week.
Yep, and then it may move up, we can move it up for your next meeting if that seems to be a good fit.
It just seemed like the whole board felt positive when we discussed it at the last meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on that for now?
There was a loop something. Didn't I say a loop something?
The Apple Street Water Loop?
Yeah, is that what it is?
Yes.
What is that?
That's just under long term, that just sits there in case it comes up in the future.
It would be very, very expensive.
Okay, so...
It would be a nice thing to have, but that's...
And then my two comments on the 97 versus 97A.
Yep.
You got a great email from Denise Casey, June 26, that I think you should use maybe some of her language, as well as the email dated June 26, 2020, that you emailed to the board. So those are both great resources for just minimal information.
Yep, okay. Next, an update on the Allen properties for tax title auction. We are moving ahead with the Zekus Group for that auction. We are lining up the answers to a lot of very detailed questions that Zekus is asking, because when they do finally release their package for bidders, they don't want any inconsistencies, they want all the little things taken care of. There are some inconsistencies on the assessor's cards, and they're working on that now, so that when the package is released, the assessor's cards don't show, like, for instance, there was, they're small things, but there was notation on the acreage of one of the lots in the official field, on the field card for acreage, but in the narrative, there was a different number used, and it's just a typo. Things like that, he doesn't want any bidder to have a sense of, well, okay, what am I really getting into here? There's a whole variety of things that we're working on, but suffice it to say that things seem to be going well. I think that was it. I don't know if you have any other questions. I am going to get, ask the DPW to blaze a path from the street to the old Bill Allen house, because the door, in case anyone wants to peek inside that day, you can't even get to it. It's so overgrown, and there's poison ivy and...
Are you sure that's not going to help that house build up?
Yeah. The house is probably okay. The garage, no one's going anywhere near that. The red house, there is already a path, because it's so close to the street.
And I just wonder whether or not, you know, even the auctioneer would just take pictures. I mean, but honestly, the buildings, they'll probably be considered tear down, never mind.
He was saying, in case somebody bid with the, with the thought that they were going to, and I'm like, yeah, if they stick their head in, I don't think I'm going to let them go in. Stick their head in, they're going to get a real good sense, real fast, of what to deal with.
There's not a single person that wants to buy that to keep a building.
I don't, I don't think so.
Every single person that's commented wants to knock them off.
We will have the ability to open that plywood, that they put a hinged door on, on the board up. We'll have the ability to open that, say, look, see, it's not that great.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want an employee to get hurt.
No.
Doing the work.
The, the next issue, the next item on, on my report is the CADA bus route. The board wanted me to ask several questions of the CADA administrator. We asked if a smaller-sized bus could be used, and apparently, they do have a smaller bus, but during the school year, which is the majority of the year, it would be difficult, because I think there's more demand for that bus, that particular-sized vehicle. Ridership. There were very few riders in July, and at the time of this email, which was in, on August 20th, there had only been one rider for August. Riders can board...
But I understand, this is a whole new thing. They just come out this summer. Again, as I was saying, didn't even know about it until I started on Facebook. I'm not just sure that was the right way to see it, but...
Riders can get off or on anywhere in the town. If they're on the same side of the road and the bus goes by, they can flag it down. If they're on the bus and they want to get off somewhere, they can ask for it to stop. What are the fixed stops? And she talks about the flag stop system, wave-a-bus. There are several time points listed in the schedule, but they're to guide customers. How many trips does the bus make, at what times on what days? There are several, Monday through Friday, and even on Saturday. It doesn't show that there are any trips on Sundays. I think that's the information that you wanted. We also got a follow-up communication from a resident who had given you one of the first letters on this.
The speeding complaint.
Yes.
Referencing the... Referencing the CADA bus as well.
I'm sorry, speeding?
Well, it's a different topic on the agenda, but I'm just bringing us over to the fact that the, regarding the speed limit on 133, she references now that the CADA bus is coming to town, traffic has been increased, and the people turning around on Hurst Street has become problematic as well, so I'm just bringing us to the topic of the CADA bus in another neighborhood has been raised.
So, I don't know what the board has for discussion at this time.
I, I'm still of the mindset that a bus of that size should be kept on major roads. I'm, I'm not sure that a large bus should go down the side streets, and I know Alva was saying that all of our, all of our streets are side streets.
And the school bus goes down that road?
I just don't, it is new.
But, I mean, I think that if you feel that way, I, I feel it's a disservice to those at the, the senior housing, was it called, Housing Authority, and to the, although I don't know that it goes to the Brookside Village.
It does not, it goes to the end of Winthrop and takes a right on Western.
So we're, you know, so then the only thing is, is then, if they don't do that, you were talking about here at the parking lot, but then they're missing out on somebody from the corner of John Weizen and Main Street that could.
So what we can do is continue to follow ridership, bring this up, I wouldn't say at the next meeting, which is in two weeks, that's kinda low, why don't we follow ridership through September?
I, I think it's still gonna be low if nobody's marketing it. If, if people in here go, because I know that I happened to say one day, oh, CADA bus comes in town, I didn't know that. And that was probably the first week they started. So if it's not promoted, September's not gonna give you any better numbers.
We need to, well.
So I guess I'm wondering, has the chamber, should, are they involved with trying to make sure, I mean, who, who's the one, without us putting up a flag or putting, you know, putting a website every week that promotes it? I think it's a, phenomenal for the town because we have not had transportation?
But we have, and this is, we had the CADA bus, we voted five years ago to get rid of the CADA bus because we had zero ridership, and all the CADA funds that we were using went to, back to be able to use that for the seniors, for kind of rides on demand, and they were using it that way. But I'm hearing tonight, which I didn't realize that they were having trouble getting CADA to respond to the request, I thought that the $23,000 that we were getting.
They'll respond, but they are not very flexible in the type of service that they'll offer, and they're getting very frustrated, they also commented that sometimes a bus will come before the appointed time, and no one's at the stop yet because it's not the appointed time, and they'll leave.
And they leave, okay.
These are the types of frustrations they were talking to me about last week.
So.
And for me, I just feel like this is beyond just the seniors, this could be a restaurant worker who lives in Gloucester, or lives in Essex, but doesn't wanna drive, or can't drive.
Sure.
I mean, I just, that's where my thing is, is that it, it, it's a great opportunity, it's a great opportunity to advertise it for troists who, hey, you're going, you're gonna be in Boston for the weekend, but you wanna take a trip to Cape Town. That's where I'm kinda like, is anybody promoting this? This is to me, you know.
I can get more information on how it is being promoted through the administrator, we didn't ask that question specifically.
And I just, I mean, because the ridership's not gonna increase, it's not. If it just happens that the bus drives by, it's not. And then when somebody does think that this is, oh, let me take the bus and I can get to the train station and then go into Boston.
I think part of the problem is, we live in a community that has not had public transportation, so most of the people that moved to this community have a vehicle, or they have figured out a way to get around. But you're right, people, restaurant workers, coming from Gloucester into Essex, though, they're gonna flag the bus driver to stop at the Blue Marlin, or Woodman's, or the James, and they're gonna get off long before the bus goes up Winthrop Street. I think the people that you're missing on Winthrop Street is Chabaco Terrace, and maybe the people that are at Brookside that might walk down to meet it at the corner of Winthrop and Western.
And I don't, I mean, was it even promoted there that, you know, there's this availability? That's, that's the only thing I'm getting at, this, is if you keep doing it this way, no, you'll never be, you'll never keep it, there's no need.
Well, I don't know how it's been promoted, CADA would.
Yeah.
Be able to give us more information on that.
Okay.
I could try to get that.
So we'll find out how it's promoted, and I still think we need to watch ridership. Because without data, there's no, you're not gonna have a bus that continues to come into Essex if the bus ridership is zero, month after month after month, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and I don't care if we don't go up Winthrop Street, if we lose that, oh, well, it is what it is, I, I just feel that if we, if we just say, oh, you know, nobody's riding it. Ridership is all based on promoting it, you don't promote it, nobody's gonna ride it.
So, if you don't care if it goes up Winthrop Street, are we happy to turn it around at the municipal lot?
I'm not happy, but I'll be willing to accept it if that's the best we can do.
Do you wanna monitor it for the month of September while we have school buses on the street, as well as a CADA bus, and then revisit it so that we can maybe get more feedback from the residents through September of seeing?
Well, it, it seems pretty much the residents don't like it. I went behind it the other day just to see, they did use the smaller bus, I can't remember, it was during the week. And, and I think they, you know, basically slowed down at the, at the Housing Authority, saw nobody and continued, they don't even stop if there's nobody there, so. I mean, I, you know what I mean, it's like, and like I said, it was the smaller bus, it was not a, it was not a, the big bus.
It wasn't the big bus.
So, I'll find out more about promotion?
Let's find out about promotion, and then we'll, let's take it up at the end of September with a notation that we'll talk about.
And I guess maybe even just ask them, would they be willing to do that switch? Instead of.
Just to find out if they would be willing to.
Find out they'd be willing to.
To turn the bus around at the municipal lot instead of going up Winthrop?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. Because I, I feel that people that live at Brookside, right now, if they need resources, they walk to Richdale, or they walk to wherever. So walking to the municipal lot is not even as far as going to Guggins or to Richdale, so I don't think it's that far. The senior, you know, Chabaco Terrace, sure, if you have somebody in a wheelchair, but they're not gonna get on a city bus anyway, they're gonna get into a wheelchair van that they've called specifically for them. So, I think we can hear the concerns and address them by doing this, we still get to keep the bus, but let's get more marketing information and ask the question if they're willing to turn around there, and then we can, we'll revisit it last meeting in September.
Was there a cost involved in this?
No.
There's no cost, this is free.
It's, it's state funds that we get.
We reprogrammed all the MBTA funds.
So I can wave it down, get on it, take a trip to Gloucester?
Oh, as far, I thought you were saying, is there a cost to the town?
Yeah, no, no, to the, to the individual. Because I haven't heard that, and I, when I, I didn't look deep enough.
I don't, I don't know, I'll find, I'll find that out. There is a cost for when, when you call in one of their buses to take you somewhere, but it's only $2 each way.
And that's why I didn't know whether or not this was.
I'll find out.
I probably should've looked deeper, but I pulled onto something else.
And then the last thing on my report is, we've had two separate residents ask questions about either speed limit changes, or in one area, ideas for slowing traffic down. One of the areas is the Grove Street intersection at Route 133. That particular section of Route 133 happens to be a section of the roadway that's actually not state jurisdiction, it is town jurisdiction. So the protocol there is, if the town wanted anything done or studied, the town would have to do their own engineering study, and then still present that to the state because it's a state numbered route still, and there would still have to be an approval, a review and approval. The other area is the area between the Gloucester line and, say, down to, right around where Lufkin Street takes off, just before that, the speed limit goes down to 30 miles per hour, the person was saying, could it be 30 miles per hour from the city-town line all the way through? In that particular case, a request could be made by the selectmen without an engineering study. The DOT would then give it some consideration, but if they wanted to go forward, then an engineering study would have to be done. And we don't have a clear idea of whether the town would have to pay for that study either.
And as far as these studies, am I not mistaken that, so they could do a study and go, oh, no.
It needs to be higher.
Forty, forty is the better rate.
Yes.
That is correct.
So that's, that's where, and if we open that up and accept something like that, that's where we're opening ourselves up, it could be changed.
Yes.
Because I know that coming from Gloucester, that flashing speed limit sign, I play games with it, I don't even, all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, good, I'm under it, or, oh, shoot, I'm over it. So it is there, I don't know if others notice it when you drive it every day.
Well, so here's, here's the way I look at it, the one that's state jurisdiction, the selectmen would be the ones that would need to ask, you're gonna have at least one step where they say yes or no without a study, right? If they say no, it's done anyway, if they say yes, then you could decide whether you wanted to have the study. The other area, since it is not under state jurisdiction, it would be under the jurisdiction of the Town Road Commissioners, which is the Board of Public Works. If you want, I could send to the superintendent this request about that particular area, and they could determine whether they wanna go through requesting money for a study, or even looking at the matter further, because it's really their jurisdiction, not the selectmen's.
So, another question is, if, what if the Town of Essex wanted to adopt Chapter 90, Section 17(c), would that go to a fall town meeting to bring the speed limit from 30 to 25 on all town-owned roads? My other question there is, so if you recall, several years ago, a lot of our surrounding communities, I think Manchester did it, Beverly did it, they did this, they adopted Chapter 90, Section 17(c), and when you went into their communities, you saw the electronic signboards that said, "Speed limit's 25 miles per hour, citywide unless otherwise posted." My question is, on our roads that we know, like, for instance, Dodge Street is 10 miles an hour, 15, it wouldn't bring it up to 20, it's because it's already posted.
Right, and what it's, what it is, is if it's not otherwise posted.
Okay. So, why don't we wanna talk about doing that as an option to?
Well, even that, you would want the Board of Public Works to weigh in, because, again, these are all streets that they have.
But the other problem is, is that 133, so the part by the town line cannot be that speed limit, correct? It's already posted.
But it's posted, sure. This isn't gonna solve all of our problems, but we have a lot of streets that are 30, and posting it 25, or making it town-wide 25, I think would be better. Like you said, every street in our town is a small street, so do we, would we wanna go a little slower or a little faster?
Yeah, I, my, my suggestion was to be as far as, could we have a flashing light? And he said that would still require a study, so.
It would, yeah.
That's kinda disappointing.
And, and it would require the Board of Public Works to review all of that with this person, and maybe they should, you know?
I mean, I just do feel that that area, especially coming from Gloucester, from just before Water Street, it is, you got Southern Ave coming out, people, I mean, I, it's just a very busy area, and having something that reminds you, hey, this is curvy.
But, the other thing I'm thinking is, why don't we have the Chief of Police weigh in on this, the possibility of changing a speed to the townwide, and see what his thoughts are? He may say that's a terrible idea, and then we don't even discuss it, but make sure when you copy the superintendent, you also copy the chair of the commissioners.
Right, so at this point, the Grove Street question, I'm going to take that whole write-up from the resident and send it to the Board of Public Works for them to consider, and to get back to that resident. With respect to the townwide, you want me to tell them at the same time about that suggestion, or you want to hear from the chief first before you?
I would wanna hear from the chief first, because if he says it's a terrible idea, then I don't want him to consider.
So we won't do anything about that particular thing until after your next meeting?
And then all the places we'd have to put it. So it's not just from Gloucester, you, if you did a townwide, you'd have to put signage on, on Southern, Southern Ave, you'd have to put signage on John Weizen, Main Street, there's a, you know, a lot of places that would be confusing.
And I think initially, it's just education, right? You put the electronic signboard in at all four gateways into the community, you leave them up for a month, and then they go away.
There's usually a sign at each gateway, too, that says, "Speed limit 25 unless otherwise posted." I've seen that in different towns.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll work on that, and that's the end of my report.
Perfect. I will entertain, no, I will make a motion to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $107,093.41.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's August 12, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's August 12, 21, 2024, open meeting and executive session.
Um, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, change order seven for the Water Filtration Plant.
Yes, I got the information on that, so we've been waiting a few meetings to hear the information. This involves the Clearwell, which was, which is a holding well for treated water, I believe, in the Water Filtration Plant. The, the current Water Filtration Plant Improvement Project called out some things that need to be done with the Clearwell, and they're still going to be done, but when they got to that particular work item, it was determined that they needed other things to make it work properly. They need a, a level transmitter, which is about 1,200 bucks, relocation of chart recorders, which they, they need to keep at the plant until they get to the full startup, that's about $1,500. It's temporary, but it's gonna require them to move it. And then the installation of a new valve and some piping on a suction line, and that's the biggest part of this, and I think that's what was really driving the need to have a change order, and that's about $4,000. So, this is about $6,700, and we're still within the project contingency, which was set at, originally at $102,000, and we have money to spare beyond that. So I recommend that the board approve change order seven, conceptually, and you can sign the paperwork at a later date.
I will make a motion to approve change order number seven for the Water Filtration Plant Improvement Project, that will be signed outside of a meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the request for the Essex County Green Belt to hold their annual Tour Day Green Belt on Saturday, September 21, 2024, beginning at 9:00 a.m. and starting at 82 Eastern Ave.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion that we approve the appointment of Sefton Earl as the Deputy Shellfish Constable, and the acceptance of the Mass Ethics Law Disclosure from Mr. Earl and Shellfish Constable Novak contingent on Mr. Earl passing a drug and medical screen, as well as a Cory check.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we received a Town of Essex Board of Selectmen public comment policy, I'm sure we've all had time to digest that. Are there any comments back regarding that?
So this is just for the Board of Selectmen meetings, correct?
Yes.
And then the 15 minutes is a grand total 15 minutes, whether it's one person or?
I'm sorry?
Right.
And it could be less if you didn't have enough speakers, like, maybe tonight.
So, and then the other thing is, is that, never mind, you know, because there's always two ways of doing public comment, you do it at the beginning, and it's related to only those items on the agenda versus doing it at the end, and it can be anything, or doing both of them, that's why I was, and, and I'm not, I don't have a favor to it either, but I just wanted to say that.
Which I think we can consider, I mean, this is just great to have something to point to when we have people that wanna talk for 20 minutes, we can limit them to two minutes. I am fine with the draft, the only comment I have is, I think one word needs to be added, the word "the," and I think it needs to be added, I'm not even sure it does, will you read that?
Yeah, it would need to be added.
So, in the first paragraph, Alva, after the word "therefore?"
The board here, my thoughts.
The board. So, that's my only change. Do you feel that you wanna bring this back, Alva, or are you comfortable if I make a motion to approve it?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
Did you get any comments from Peter?
I did not.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the draft policy regarding public comment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anything that wasn't anticipated?
I don't have anything.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to public comment, we have nobody in the room with us, oh, actually, my apologies, reminders, the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, September 9, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the third floor of the town 2024, at 6:00 PM in the third floor of the Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. I'm now going to turn public comment over to anybody joining us online. If you do have a public comment, please unmute yourself, identify yourself with your name